Good evening, welcome to your city council meeting of December 6, 2022, 6:00 PM here in city council chambers. We're going to call the meeting to order and we're going to start with our pledge of the flag and we'll be led by student Leo Rogan. Where's Leo? Hey Leo, come on down.
Come on Leo.
Yeah, it was from Robinson Elementary School.
Please stand, put your right hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Don't go anywhere Leo, I see you're running away. Nope, you gotta stand up here and take it like the rest of us. We're gonna call up your principal Jackie O. Sullivan and teacher Lori Desmond. Is Jackie here too? Alright, come on down, I see ya.
Hi, we're so excited to have everybody here today. This is really a nice surprise, right? All these kids came just to see you, did you know that? No, he's like, no, that's not okay. Alright, so at Robinson, we are fortunate to have a student body that is kind, responsible, safe, and respectful. And having a student who stands out above the crowd is remarkable. And Leo is that student. Leo puts forth the total effort in everything from schoolwork to friendships to sports. And he is conscientious about going above and beyond with academic work and going out of his way to help his friends in his classroom and on the playground. Leo is a friend who always lends a helping hand and a role model who is consistently willing to mentor others. He stands up to the bully and helps students realize that their actions are unkind and for them to stop. He has a big heart, a contagious smile, and compassion for those around him. With great pride, Robinson recommends Leo Rogan for the student pledge program this evening. Leo, we thank you and congratulate you for serving as such an exemplary role model for your fellow Robinson Riptides. Congratulations.
She doesn't like to talk. I've heard Ms. Sullivan talk many times.
I didn't know I get to speak too, but anyway, when we were trying to figure out who to choose for our student representative, Leo came to mind right away because he really is a very sweet and kind and empathetic child. And we just, we think he's great. He follows all of our four Bs. And just ever since I started at Robinson, he's just been like so pleasant and sweet. So congratulations Leo.
So Leo, what grade are you in?
Fifth.
Fifth grade. Look at that. We thinking basketball or volleyball in the future for you, I think. But just want to thank you for coming down, starting our meeting for us so nicely with the pledge of allegiance and all the great things that were said about you. We know there's a future seat up here for you if you want one, one of these days. But in the meantime, just keep up the great work. Oh yeah. In the meantime, keep up the great work. We appreciate everything you do. Here's a certificate on behalf of the city and a city pin for you to wear at school. Alright, thank you. And? Did you bring anyone with you tonight?
Yes, my mom, my dad, my grandma over there.
All the cameras are on. Alright, council ready for a picture? Let's take a quick picture. We can look right towards our dads here left.
Dad, dad.
One more.
Yes.
Yep, we'll do that next. Alright. Don't go away, we got our cer- oh, we're gonna do roll call. Alright, well, I was gonna sit down. Roll call please.
Councilmember Franklin?
Here.
Councilmember Hadley?
Here.
Councilmember Stern?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Montgomery?
Here.
Mayor Napolitano?
Here. And that takes us to our ceremonial calendar and this is presentation of certificates of recognition through the 2022 Fire Department Annual Home Escape Plan Contest winners. We got Fire Chief Lang here. He's bringing down more folks. Who'd you bring?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Excuse me. I get the honor of representing the Fire Department and our 15th Annual Great Escape Plan and something I got to inherit. So very fortunate with that, but I'm gonna pass it on to firefighter, paramedic Pat Jacobson and Inspector Susie Contreras and they got a little history behind it.
This is a program I inherited as well. Firefighter, paramedic, and fire inspector Brian Yount. He started this program 15 years ago. It was one of the first prevention, public education programs in the country. Since he's initiated that program 15 years ago, a lot of our neighbor agencies have actually taken to it and now do it as well. What the program does, it's a presentation to all second grade classes in Manhattan Beach, so all six elementary schools. This year, I took it over and kind of tried to make it my own. If you guys know Brian, he's very charismatic. I don't have that type of charisma when I speak, so I had to kind of tailor it to myself and just to the education and what I appreciate about the fire service. I come from a firefighting background and so I wanted the kids to see the fire engine, spray some water, and also throw in some education in there as well, some home escape ideas and thought processes, and including the family as well. So the program is a presentation from the firefighters and then it's a homework assignment. To all second graders in the district are given a homework assignment to do with their parents. And it's creating a art board or something that shows us that they acknowledge two routes out of the house, extinguishers, or extinguishers and smoke detectors and things that they can contribute with their family if there's an emergency at their house. So all the second graders did an amazing job this year, but we chose one winner from every school and they got the grand prize of a ride to school on a fire engine. So we got to spend the morning with them. We picked them up from their house. We took them out on the town for a quick little donut or cookie and then we dropped off at school. The schools were very acknowledging and brought the classes out and made them feel very special for that whole day. So this is really about the kids who won the home escape plan here today and acknowledging their effort in this program. So Susie was a huge help logistically. It was a lot of time and effort from the whole Fire Department, but it was a community effort and something that I hope continues with Brian's absence. There's a short video we'd like to play. This is actually prepared by Brian. He still has a hand in everything with the Great Escape Home Plan, so we'd like to show you a video if that's okay.
Okay, yes, we'll present them right now, but just, I will say that it's scary on my part recognizing each and every donut shop that they attend at. I don't know how often I've been to those. But we want to make, present our certificates, but one serious note though is that folks, let this be a lesson to you. And those at home, those in the audience who aren't here, who have been part of this project, is that everyone should have an escape plan like these folks put together, like the kids put together for their families, for their parents. Everyone should have an escape plan for an emergency. So if you don't have one, think about that and do it. In the meantime, let's bring them on down, congratulate them. Brady Carlson, come on down. And we got a city pin for you too. Who do we have next? Annabelle, Annabelle Coffey. Stay up here. Annabelle, you did such a great job. We're gonna move you closer next time. Congratulations. Nicole, Nicole Stewart. I guess they should be announcing their schools. Penny Camp and Meadows for Annabelle and American Mars for Nicole. Congratulations. And from Pacific Elementary School, Kathleen. Thank you. Congratulations. City pin for you. Phoenix, Phoenix Rahal from Robinson as well. We are dressed apart, Phoenix. There we go. And a city pin for you too. You can put that on the suspenders. And Taylor, Taylor Winkle from Grand View. Alright, congratulations to our 2022 Home Escape Plan. We're gonna bring everyone in. Alright, council, go on in.
Taylor, they won't cut you out picture that way.
Okay, ready everybody? Over here. One, two, and three. Thank you.
Yep, parents, we got parents. Thank you.
Anybody else? Straight ahead.
We all taking video at this point?
Great program.
Congratulations. Thank you very much. As Hildy said, her first award recipient, she didn't have to stand on the step for.
Someday I'll have to stand in front of them.
They get sad credit for being in the film?
Yes.
That was a lot of credits for.
Yeah. Producer, Brian Yount. Executive producer, Brian Yount.
And director, written by.
We know how much all the kids want to stay and watch our meeting, but we'll give everyone a minute or two to. Don't hurt our feelings. Congratulations. Okay, well.
Phoenix wants to stay.
Nope, he's out here. Okay. As they clear out, we can go on to item E. This is approval of agenda and waiver of full reading of ordinances. Does council have any items they intend to pull from the consent calendar? Now's the time to do it.
Yes, Mayor.
What do you got?
If I may, number 11, please.
Okay. Council, anything else? Any other pulls from consent calendar? I've seen none. Then we'll do a approval of agenda and waiver of full reading of ordinances, recognizing that item 11 will be pulled under the consent calendar. We have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Montgomery, second by Councilmember Hadley. Voting stream, please. Please vote. Alright, thank you. Alright.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Now that takes us to city council on community organization announcements of upcoming events. These are one minute per person announcements of upcoming events in our community. If anyone has an event they want to come down and share with everyone, come on down. Thank you for being here. Sure you don't want to stay?
Good evening, Mayor and city council members. I'm Jan Buick with the older adult program. And first of all, I want to talk about the older adult holiday luncheon, which for the first time in three years is back inside Jocelyn Community Center. So we're excited about that. And it is sold out as it usually is and stuff. So we're doing all the usual, you know, the meal, the band and everything. We did reduce the number of participants and stuff. And I want to say thank you to the support of the community. You know, it's been wonderful and we're looking forward to it. And that will be on Wednesday, December 14th. So that's that. And then the other holiday, big holiday event is, and I'm gonna, okay, this Sunday, we have the Manhattan Beach Holiday Fireworks. Starting at 3 o'clock, you can do, you can have snow, you can have sleigh rides, you can have the Miracosa Band, you can have the, oh my gosh, everything is up there. You know, you can have the Skechers, the fireworks starting at 7 o'clock. So you've got Santa Claus, you've got the Miracosa Jazz Band, you have just everything going on. So please join, take a look at the parking and all where the activities are so you know, you know, to be on the sand to look at, watch them and everything and be safe and enjoy the Skechers fireworks this year.
Thanks Jan. I think one thing we want to point out too is that the Snow Park is going to be at Live Oak this year. It's not going to be down at the pier parking lot.
Okay, so Live Oak. And you all know that's off of Valley Drive, so, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, anyone else for community announcements?
Your, your honor, could I just?
Now get to council.
Yep.
Hi, Carol Patterson, tonight representing leadership Manhattan Beach. And I'm here to announce that they are again working with the Trinity Lutheran Church to present its Wonderful Life. I know some of you attended last year. I'm hoping you'll go again. It is this weekend, Friday night, Saturday night, 7 o'clock, and on Sunday at noon. So you can go there and then come downtown for the festivities and just spend the entire day celebrating Manhattan Beach.
Carol, do you want to say the address for the church? Or how they can get the tickets? Or are there tickets involved?
The tickets, yes. And I'll leave this, it's got.
Information on there?
Yeah.
Okay.
You get the tickets online. And so it's pretty straightforward. And I will leave a press release and a poster.
Is there a website you want to announce for the tickets?
No, well, yes. It says, tickets now on sale at trinitymb.org.
Thank you.
I think that covers it.
Alright, other community announcements? Alright, we'll go to Zoom. Anyone on Zoom? Okay, David Archer.
Good evening, honorable mayor and city council members. It's my honor to be here before you this evening to invite you to the Manhattan Beach Chamber of Commerce's Holiday Mixer Extravaganza at Manhattan Village tomorrow evening at 5:30. There'll be lots of food, fun, and frivolity. And we may even have a visit from Old Saint Nick. So come on out and join us. All you need is a toy to benefit the Beach Cities Toy Drive and have some fun. Thank you so much and have a great evening.
Thank you, David. Alright, so anyone else on Zoom? Okay, no one else in the audience? Alright, council, Mayor Pro Tim Montgomery.
Thank you, your honor. Two things. One, as the part of the MB Fireworks Advisory Board, this year, not only the Skechers Snow Park moving to Live Oak as the mayor said, but the deck, the area across from Shellback, will be open for seating for the first time in 29 years. So the fact that Skechers is moving to Snow Park and the Bounce House, Live Oak, opens a parking lot, I call the deck. The parking lot across from Shellback will be open for seating. So bring your blankets and everything else will be that side. It's unusual, first time we've ever done that before. So we'll see how that goes. And part of that's the police chief, Ranger Johnson's issue of moving the crowd away and not making it so congested downtown by the pier, or making people shift around. And after you're done with the Live Oak Park, you can just walk down the hill. So we think it's a good idea. We're gonna try it and see what happens. And then second to that, the 30th Annual Beach Cities Toy Drive, most of you've been there before. This year, Hermosa gets the glory of having the 30th Annual. It's in Hermosa Beach, 710. Pier Avenue is the address, Community Center, but it's December 17th. And yes, they are having both the drop off portion every Saturday until then, but they're actually having in-person, unless the county shuts them down, in-person toy wrapping this year, December 17th in Hermosa Beach, from 11:00 AM until every single toy is wrapped. And there's thousands, as both our city clerk and assistant clerk will tell you. A lot of work goes into it and next year it comes back to Manhattan, thank God. But we'll accept toys here at City Hall and Police and Fire Station until that time. And we transport over on the 17th. Someone has a free day on the 17th, Saturday, please join us in Hermosa Beach for the 30th Annual Beach Cities Toy Drive. Thank you, your honor.
Thank you, Councilmember Franklin.
Yes, thank you. I just want to give an update on the e-bike safety program in the city. There's probably going to be some e-bikes under the Christmas tree and regular bikes as well. So we want to make sure that we prepare those young riders for going out in the streets. So we have now conducted two full assemblies in the elementary schools with a focus on the fifth graders. We're going to be in January going to the middle school for an e-bike safety assembly. I got some statistics. In the last six months, there have been 28 citations related to unsafe operation of bicycles that have been given. There have been 13 citations with regards to unsafe use of helmets or not having a helmet. So MBPD, I want to thank you very much for all your help and cooperation. But the most important stat is that there were 120 warnings issued by MBPD for unsafe operation. Now, that's approaching a younger rider and they're using education, they're using that as a learning experience for that rider, riders, as far as the bicycle operations. There's also going to be increased enforcement activity right after the kids get out of school. So be forewarned and be, and just follow the rules of the road. So you've seen the flyers all over the place, so pay attention to those. They're also being handed out on the Santa sleigh. So the little elves, when the Santa sleigh stops, little elves will go out and hand these to the parents and to the kids. So we're really working hard, everybody in the city is working hard to get the message out. So when you see somebody doing something right, when you see a kid wearing their helmet properly or stopping at a stop sign, shout out to them. Give them a shout out, praise them. You don't have to yell at the ones that are not doing it, but, but pick, you know, find the ones that are doing and following, you know, doing things right and give them a shout out. Have a safe holiday season.
Thank you, Councilmember Franklin. That takes us to public comments. These are public comments of up to three minutes per person on any matter that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city of Manhattan Beach, including items on the agenda. If you speak at this point of the meeting though, and want to speak later on the agenda as well, though, you don't get two bites at the apple. If you're gonna speak now, that's it. If you want to speak on the agenda item, speak on the agenda item and wait for that. In the meantime, anyone wants to come and make a public comment, up to three minutes? Come on down.
Good evening. My name is Leigh Phillips and I'm a co-founder of MB Safe. I also sit on the board of MB Safe as vice president. MB Safe, Manhattan Beach Safe Alternatives for Everyone, is a nonprofit that connects the homeless to outreach services and shelter and ensures safe communities for all. My first email to the city was in 2015. That year, the city counted 44 homeless individuals in the annual homeless count. In 2018, Suzanne reached out to me and a young MB Safe organization to discuss my thoughts and solutions on homelessness. At that time, she actually made homelessness a campaign promise. Over the last four years, Suzanne continued to keep her campaign promise. As she leaves office, we now have a process to address homelessness in Manhattan Beach. We have a dedicated homeless liaison in city government to handle complex homeless issues. The Reach MB app allows residents and businesses to report homeless issues directly to the city government. There is a dedicated, flexible and responsive outreach worker. And most importantly, the city pays for five shared collaborative housing beds. It gives the homeless not only a shelter bed, but a home. The city council has to address many issues facing the city. And not everyone can focus on all the issues all the time. But I know many of you use our parks, go to our beaches, dine downtown, and walk for exercise. And you have to notice our public spaces are safe, clean, and accessible, which is a direct result of the work Suzanne has done. I just want to thank Suzanne for working collaboratively with MB Safe. It wasn't easy. Homelessness is not easy. But she took on the challenge and she worked with us to find solutions. So I just want to thank Suzanne for that hard work. I appreciate it. And I know the countless people we've helped appreciate it. I hope we will continue to work on these important issues, maybe in a different capacity. I know your knowledge of the residents in the city would be invaluable. I look forward to working with you in the future. Thank you for everything you've done.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Adam Goldson. I'm a 32-year resident of Manhattan Beach. Suzanne, I am privileged, honored to be able to say that I've known you and David since 1997, if you can believe it's been that long. Just a few items on my list here. There are many fiscal accolades that are attached to your name. The one that strikes me most is your consistent support for reasonable, sensible levels of taxation. So I thank you for opposing hotel tax. And I also oppose you, thank you for opposing Measure A. I also want to thank you for unapologetically maintaining our small-town vibe. Lot of items on this list supporting small businesses, unequivocally supporting the Fire Department, and of course the Police Department, fighting to control our own destiny when it comes to development, zoning, and of course, opposing dispensaries. We, we have a challenge going forward, I believe. And in fact, I hope it's not, but I sense it could be a problem as well. And the challenge is, I don't believe that this community is anywhere close to level set on the definition of moderate. So I hope that we can all, council go in future, the future council, when the two, when council members Stern and Hadley come off, can really work to define that word, moderate, and not just what one person or another person thinks. So again, Suzanne, Councilmember Hadley, thank you very much.
Good evening, council members. I just want to say thank you to all of you who have been such stalwart supporters of the senior and scout community center project in this last meeting of this constituted council. And, you know, we're making progress on new plans and a new cost estimate. And we'll be bringing that back to the city council at your January 17th meeting. But Councilmember Stern and Councilmember Hadley won't be part of that group. And so just want to thank all And so just want to thank all of you for your support of this project. And I also want to recognize Councilmember Hadley's leadership as a campaign, Capitol Campaign co-chair. She and Russ Lesser really stepped up to help us with the private fundraising for this project, and we are very appreciative of that leadership. And I look forward to working with the rest of you as we move forward and get this building built. So thank you very much, and very, very happy holidays to all of you.
Great. How do they reach you? How do they reach if they want to contribute money to the Scout House?
Oh, I love that. So we are in a campaign right now, Councilmember Franklin, for people to purchase bricks for people who in, on their Christmas list or holiday gift-giving list who have everything. You can purchase them a personalized brick that will be in the courtyard of the new facility, and you can go to thescouthouse.org to purchase that brick. Thank you very much for that.
I personally like bricks. Sorry.
Hello. Good evening, council. Thanks for allowing us to speak. I wanted to add on to some, what some of the other speakers have said and give a heartfelt thank you to Councilmember Hadley for her untiring service to our town. She went above and beyond the call of duty to research and discuss each topic, listen to residents, then highlight specific points from multiple angles for the residents and other voting council members to hear. I did not agree with her vote on all topics as it should be, but to witness a council member give 110% each and every meeting was unquestionably laudable. She was unwavering in her convictions and a true and trusted advocate for our town and its future. I was truly saddened by all of the unjustified attacks she'd endured in office, from threatening personal attacks to repeated misquotes by the newspapers and the supposed anti-hate group, but never in my decades as a resident did I ever expect hateful residents to go solo to form an anti-Hadley political action committee to raise money, lots of money, with the sole purpose to attack a candidate, hence turning the last campaign vitriolic. I hope beyond hope that this behavior is not repeated. But thank you for letting me speak, and thank you so much for your service, Suzanne.
Hi, my name is Tiffany Barbara, and I am a 20-plus-year resident here in Manhattan Beach. And I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank Suzanne Hadley for her incredible service to the city, always prepared and such an incredible leader. She fought selflessly for diversity of thought and opinion, which is critical to any leadership body, and we really appreciate that. When Adam spoke about moderation, I think having that voice and that diversity of voice is really critical to having that moderation, and that's really key. So thank you for giving us that. I also want to thank her for emphasizing the role that parents have in their children's education and parents' right to decide what's appropriate and what's not appropriate for their children. I also want to thank her for keeping our children safe in the classrooms, as well as helping us open classrooms, especially you, Mr. Montgomery, as well, in order to get those classrooms open while our kids sat there suffering and became at risk. I want to thank you for your emphasis of, on a strong public safety, as well as supporting an alternative to DA George Gascon, who quite frankly endangers our public safety here in Manhattan Beach. I want to thank you for the continued outdoor dining in an effort to support not only our citizens, but also our small business restaurateurs. I also want to thank you for supporting our small businesses, who are the backbone of our community, preserving our small-town feel, which is critical to the future success of our town, and also, as a numbers person, the fiscal responsibility of City Hall is super important to the ongoing concern of Manhattan Beach. And also, and close and near and dear to my heart and Leigh's heart as well, is the continued work on moving our unhoused off the streets and into shelters where they can be safe and live more productive lives. Suzanne, you've given so much to the children and families in our community. We look forward to continuing your legacy and fostering a welcoming environment in our community going forward. Thank you for being that leader.
Mayor Napolitano, council members. I am Fred Taylor, a 46-year resident of Manhattan Beach. Please forgive me, I have a San Diego sweatshirt on. I didn't think this thing through clearly. I rise tonight to thank Councilwoman Hadley for her superlative service to our city during the past four years. I so much appreciate that she advocated for superior public safety and had the courage to oppose our misguided LAD Agasson and his pro-criminal, anti-victim policies. Ms. Hadley proudly and unapologetically supported our wonderful small businesses during COVID. She helped block the hideous High Rose Project and fought hard to keep our fire department local. I also appreciate her efforts supporting our parents' group and our petition to the MBUSD to take the pornographic book Gender Queer off their website. Ms. Hadley was labeled a book banner. Imagine that, a book banner. To me, she was protecting our kids from pornography, which is both prudent and wise parenting. The real measure of a leader is not merely what they did, but how they did it. She endured unprecedented political headwinds, especially as her term for mayor approached. The highly political move to block her term is something I've never seen in this city. And in the recent election, political adversaries and their cohorts organized an anti-Hadley PAC and a marketing campaign in excess of $7,000. She navigated all the ugly many of our citizens have thrown at her with class, dignity, and integrity. Maybe it's all time for each of us to look in the mirror and emulate Suzanne's graciousness when we're in the public square. Councilwoman Hadley, you took the high road all the way through. We benefited from your service to Manhattan Beach.
Hi, Bob Severs. I'm a 25, 30-year resident of Manhattan Beach. Know you all on the council. Appreciate what you do. Suzanne, I came here to especially thank you. I think so much has been said before me. It's, I don't need to repeat the obvious, but I do, I am so admirable of you standing up against what I consider hate. And, you know, we all have different perspectives. And even on that subject of hate, you know, while that might be a noble goal, unfortunately, that exists in the world, and it exists in places where maybe one might not want to look for it. And I certainly think that there's altruism to wanting to stamp out hate and racism. I think that's a great thing. But I would personally, just publicly as a citizen of this city, want to say, why don't we think about spreading love and diversity of opinion and inclusion of ideas? We're all come, we all came from the same cloth, and we're all going to the same cloth. And it breaks me up, it kills me to see what's happened to the city, what's happened to the country. It's not going to stop until we stop these platitudes and these things that we're going to stamp out our own position. You can't do that. You can't stamp things up, because you know what happens when people start to stamp? People stamp back. So what we and you have shown us so bravely, we need to spread love, we need to spread unity, tolerance, tolerance of each other. And there's not a person on this panel that I could say I deeply dislike or hate, and I don't think there's very many people in this city that hate anybody. And racism itself is a horrible thing, but you know what? It's, the underpinnings are racism. The emotion behind that is fear. And if we want to stamp out fear, what a great idea, because it's been peddled for the last number of years to ad nauseam. And we have little kids running around, petrified to take off the mask, because no one knows what they look like without that mask. And I'm, you know, I don't want to get into the mask debate and all of that, but there's a lot of stuff that's going on, and I'm just, besides here to thank Susan, here to, and frankly, to thank Hildy as well, thank you for your service as well. We don't think alike, but that's okay. And for the people that are going to come on this council and for the remaining people that are to stay here, I just ask, as this gentleman put it as well, let's come together, let's be in the middle, let's exchange ideas, let's stop this stupidity. Seriously, thank you so much. Thank you.
Other speakers? If you plan to speak, come on down. We've got chairs here in front.
Hi, my name is Lucia La Rosa Ames. I am a resident of Manhattan Beach, and I'm the president of MB Safe. I want to share early sentiments. I met Suzanne in 2018 on a sheer passion to provide compassionate and safe solutions for the announced, in the meantime, keep the community safe. And Suzanne has always walked the walk, and she's a doer. She's not, she's not just a talker. And I wanted to thank you for all you have done, not only for homelessness, for being champion for the homeless court, for our, for the city prosecutors with the Rhondo Beach that would allow us to go to the homeless court. And you really champion the additional shared beds and our own city navigator, and our city is safer because of you. And I wanted to tell you also that I always tell my kids that being defeated is just a temporary condition, as long as you do not submit to the logic of being agreeable, because we cannot be agreeable when mistakes are made, like were made during COVID, when injustices are done. Like when, what happened when parents were not provided with the right to decide what the kids could read and not read, their own kids. And, and so this is just a temporary condition, and the best leaders are the one that have dared to do mighty things and that they know what needs a setback and that they can move forward and find their way back. And I really hope that you stay engaged, and this is an opportunity, because now you really are unleashed and can do even more from outside to make sure that we go back to the right track, because I agree, you are a moderate. The fact that the buff, the extreme left of the PAC attacked you, and MB Strong, the extreme right, attacked you, for me, is just a sign that you are right where you had to be, in the center. You are a moderate.
Hi, my name is Heather Kim, and unfortunately, I didn't, don't have anything prepared. And I just want to say, one of my first times here was, I don't know, my husband told me to come one day, and he said, I need you to speak on something at city council, because something about our business, and I don't remember exactly what it was. So I came totally unprepared, and I remember seeing, seeing your face. You came up and you talked to me right after something did not go our way, even though I spoke passionately about it. And so that's the first time I saw you, and you made yourself available all the time. And I just thought, wow, this is someone who really cares about small businesses, about the residents here. She didn't know me at all, and yet she came up to fight for people like me. And so that was my first interaction with Suzanne, and I just wanted to take a moment to just say thank you for, I guess you really lit a fire under a lot of people. And something that we can all say about you is, woman, you have balls of steel. You have so much integrity that you can, like, nobody, nobody can hold a candle to you, especially in that department. And I really hope that, that my girls, you know, can look up to you as I do, because I want to be like you when I grow up, you know? And, and that they are, my children will all be willing to stand up for what they believe in to the end, even if that means it comes at a great personal cost, which you have endured for, not just during this campaign season, but, you know, throughout your four years here. You have had such amazing triumphs during the four years you've been here. You've made Manhattan Beach a much better and safer place, and I know that, I know it's just a setback, and I hope that in the next few years, that this council will be able to be more, will be able to come together more, and that it'll bring our city together, because what I've seen has been a lot of divisiveness from people who say they don't like divisiveness. And so I just want to, I don't want to just say everything that everybody else has said, but I truly value you as a councilwoman, and now I can value you as my friend. So thank you, Suzanne.
Hi, Suzanne Ray Joseph. I want to reiterate a lot of things that people were saying today. You were in office in very, very difficult times, and it was, I mean, for all of you, it was just very, very difficult times, and I really appreciate everything you've done for our city and for our people here and for our schools. I don't like extremes of either side, and trying to get to the middle is always where you get the best solutions. But I truly, truly appreciate everything you've done for us, and I wanted to say thank you. And then to everybody else, thank you for putting up with us. I don't know how you guys sit through this every two weeks, but thank you guys so much, and you guys all have a Merry Christmas. Thank you so much.
Hello. Heidi Raiden Tobias, four-year resident. I'm also not prepared, but I am prepared, because I wanted to speak to you, Suzanne, and thank you from the bottom of my heart for representing us. I first met you when I was helping Joe Franklin with his campaign, and I was, before I even got to know you, was so amazed by your strength and your groundedness and your intelligence and your perseverance. And it's all the characteristics as a woman that, you know, you admire a strong woman, someone grounded, someone in this day and age who speaks for you and who speaks to things that are now villainized, like it's villainized to support the police. All these things that were normal a few years ago are now not, and you stand for that, and you're our voice. And the attacks from the left that are given to you are also given to residents like myself. I've had my "thank you, MBPD" sign thrown on the ground. I've been yelled at for displaying a "no on a" sign, although I'm happy to see people's other signs and differences, and I feel you're that way as well. I just wanted to come tonight to publicly thank you, and we're really sad that we won't have your voice speaking for us. It's just really hard, because I felt like you really deserved your seat, and I guess you can't really compete with a PAC who's so vindictive and committed to bring someone down, which I would never do to another council member who maybe doesn't represent what I stand for. I think all voices should be represented on this council. So I wanted to publicly bring you flowers, because that's what I do, and just, I hope you feel the love from all of us, and you will just be so, so missed greatly, and Merry
Other speakers? All right, any on Zoom?
All right. Any on Zoom? Okay. All right. That takes us out of public comments, then. Onto our consent calendar. These are routine and customary items enacted by a single motion with the exception of items previously removed from the consent calendar during approval of the agenda, which was item 11 by Councilmember Franklin. So can we get a motion to approve the consent counter with the exception of item 11? Okay, moved by Councilmember Franklin, seconded by Mayor Pro Tim Montgomery. Voting screen, thank you.
Motion passes five zero.
Next is the items removed from the consent calendar. This was item 11, removed by Councilmember Franklin. Councilmember Franklin?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So the reason I pulled this is, I know we've had a lot of problems with, with our Granicus system, and in particular with the closed captioning and availability of video and everything like that. So I just wanted to, I know city staff has been working on it. And I know a lot of the people, a lot of the residents are concerned about it. So I just would like to have a brief explanation of what the problem has been and what, what solutions are we seeking?
Yes, IT Director Terry Hackelman is prepared to answer questions, as is City Clerk Lisa Tamora.
Thank you.
Good evening. Terry Hackelman, the IT Director, Honorable Mayor and council members. Certainly like to try to address your question tonight. You know, it's a little bit difficult question to answer, because Granicus actually provides us a lot of services within the city. I'm going to let the city clerk comment about the closed captioning. But when it comes to some of the web streaming activities that we've had and issues recently, Granicus has been working on those. I'm going to remove my face mask.
If we say anything bad, we'll be cut off right now.
Well, we do have representatives from Granicus on the line tonight. They have recognized some of the service issues and have issued the city a $1,100 credit related to the web archiving issues that we recently had. And they're working very actively with us right now. We meet on a monthly basis. We go through all their solutions, all of our issues. And I think we're making some headway there. With that, I'll go ahead and let the city clerk comment on some of the closed captioning.
Thank you, City Clerk Lisa Tamora. Closed captioning has been an issue. We have been working with Granicus. We also are looking at other vendors, as well as Granicus has a closed captioning module that we are looking at right now. I did speak to Councilmember Franklin as he was expressing some of his concerns. The majority of the things that I did want to address is the backup to the iframe, the Granicus iframe when it goes down. We do have a backup on the city's calendar, which is a different server. And it is going to have the YouTube video of our council meetings now. So if Granicus does go down, we do have a backup. So that shouldn't be an issue, which has happened in the last couple of upgrades.
We're going to be on YouTube?
YouTube.
Oh, that's scary. All right. What else? Any other questions?
No, that's fine.
Do you have a motion?
I, I move that we accept item number 11, consideration of a resolution approving amendment number four, extending by one year the professional services agreement with Granicus.
Okay. And it was reminded, public comment, anyone want to come down and speak to this item? Seeing no mad rush. Anyone on Zoom? Okay. All right. Then we have a motion. There you go. Do we have a second? Seconded by Councilmember Hadley, moved by Councilmember Franklin. Can we have a voting screen, please? Okay, please vote.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay. Takes us to public hearings. Item 12, consideration of an annual military equipment usage report pursuant to Assembly Bill 481. Chief Johnson.
Good evening, Mayor Monapolitano, members of the council, Rachel Johnson, your police chief. This item will be presented by Lieutenant Benjamin.
Luckily, I sat briefly right there, so I'm rested for this. All right. Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. Today, I'm presenting our annual military equipment use report during this public meeting as required by the California Government Code Section Seven, sorry, 7072. This is a transparency law meant to better inform the public of the equipment used by their local law enforcement agencies. As required by the government code, our city ordinance, and our military equipment policy, the report was required to have a summary of how our military equipment was used, a summary of any complaints received, which was none, the results of internal audits, audits, no issues were identified, our annual costs, and the amount of military equipment we currently possess, which is found in our equipment list. A request for approval for any military equipment we may seek in the coming year is also necessary during this meeting. Before I begin, I do have a few clarifications for the council and the public. The word military equipment is, is kind of a weighted word. And it's defined by statute, not by us here at the Manhattan Beach Police Department. So the best way I would describe it for everybody here and everybody listening at home is military equipment, per the statute, is really comprised of the tools that we don't carry on our person as police officers every day. Instead, it's the tools that we use situationally and in very specific circumstances. And an example that I would give you here would be a drone, which we currently use at the department. It qualifies as military equipment under the statute. However, the drone model that we use is commercially available and it can be purchased at Costco or Amazon. We're also required by statute to gain approval of the equipment we may seek in the upcoming year. And this is a new process that I would describe to you as the process before the process now. So what I mean by that is any approval we receive tonight, when it comes to the equipment we are requesting, you're not telling us, or you won't be approving the actual equipment purchase. That goes through our budget process, and that process has not changed. So again, when I say process before the process, that's where we are here tonight. And so with that, I will start our summary of the, of our equipment use for the 2022 calendar year. I mentioned drones earlier. Drones are called something else in, in the law enforcement community. That is an unmanned aerial system, also known as a UAS. Just, I think to sound official, but we deployed our UAS six times this year. And we did that on calls for service, search warrants, and during special events. We'd also deployed it once for training. We deployed it during the pier lighting, and we will deploy, or we plan to deploy our UAS during our fireworks event this weekend. Our Bearcat rescue vehicle was used for three community events this year and one search warrant. It was used for the pier lighting and it will be used for the fireworks event as well. Our command and control vehicle, which is the RV command post that everyone always sees in the upper pier lot when we have a community event, was deployed during the six-man volleyball tournament, deployed during the MB Open, and was also deployed during the pier lighting and will be deployed for our fireworks event. The SWAT MCV, which is a mobile command vehicle, is basically a vehicle that stores all of the equipment for our SWAT team. And that way, they're able to respond to the scene of an emergent situation without having to come to the police station first. That was deployed four times for SWAT trainings and two times for search warrants this year. Breaching tools that are explosive in nature qualify under this law, under our policy. And we did not use those tools in 2022, nor did we use any explosive projectiles, nor did we deploy or train with any tear gas or OC that's owned by the Manhattan Beach Police Department. Rifles were only used for training purposes in 2022. The trainings that we use these for included our annual qualifications, our new officer qualifications, and SWAT team trainings. Noise flash diversionary devices, which are more often known as flashbangs, were used twice for training purposes in 2022. And we used six devices total. Kinetic energy weapons, which are the launchers we use to file, to fire. The less than lethal sponge rounds were used nine times for our new officer imperishable skills trainings for our employees. The total annual cost for our military equipment, including acquisition, personnel, training, transportation, maintenance, storage, upgrades, and other ongoing costs, was about $25,000. And those costs were absorbed in our police department budget. We also provided in-house training that was conducted this past year, and that included training using some of our military equipment. The cost for much of that training on the use of military equipment was rolled into our overall police training budget. And that's because these trainings weren't specific to military equipment. And so the example I would give you here is our SWAT team trains holding their SWAT rifles. And they'll train doing entries into businesses or just general buildings. And what that training really is, is movement training. It's not rifle training. But because they're holding the rifle, technically, it qualifies as military equipment training. And that's why we roll it in to our normal training budget. The future and continuing military equipment costs will continue to be absorbed into our police department budget, or at least that's the plan right now. Our year-to-date updated military equipment log, which is attached to the presentation, will continue to be updated throughout the end of the year and then placed on our website in 2023, once the year closes out. And now for the, the newest part of this presentation, and that's the requested additional military equipment for 2023. And, and we do have some requests for purchases and procurement over the next year. But I again want to say that these requests does not mean that this equipment will actually be purchased. It's only that if it's approved, our department will start looking into making these purchases following our process for the budget that's already in place in the city. Our drone team is requesting the purchase of upgraded drones. Both of the options that are available are commercially available drones. Some can get purchased, probably not at Costco, but I think we saw them on Amazon once, but it's mainly directly through the company. I do want to be really clear that these are commercially available and these are not purchases that we make from the military. These aren't military drones. These are the drones that we see over the pier quite often, taking pictures. Our drone team would also like to take possession of three unused drones from our fire department. There's no purchase here, but part of the law does require anytime we procure new equipment to also make that request. So the drones, these drones would be used to train our drone operators. And the idea behind that is if we do end up purchasing a brand-new drone, the first time one of our operators uses that drone, we would like them to have a practice drone and not our brand-new piece of equipment that we would like to, to serve the public with. I'm sure their flying will be great, but just in case, practice drones would be amazing for us. Those drones are the Mavic 210V1. And honestly, I have no idea what these drone numbers mean. I'm sure there's somebody here, but they're, from what I was told, they're a little bit older models. But they have the same basic flying needs and you have to use the same techniques. So they would really benefit the police department. So the Mavic 210V1, the Mavic 210V2, the Phantom 4, and some components for that as well. Other than drones, we are requesting, or we may request to purchase a Lenko Bearcat, Bearcat rescue vehicle during the budgetary process. The current Bearcat we use is shared by multiple South Bay agencies, and it's nearing the end of its useful life, which is the reason that request may come up. And finally, our last request, just to really confuse everybody here, is not for an item at all. It is instead a request for approval from the city council to put into place a mechanism to request additional military equipment via a staff report to, to you should the need occur prior to the next public meeting, tentatively scheduled for 2023. And that is a mouthful, so let me explain that in a different way. Basically, AB41, which is 481, which is the bill that put this entire process into place, had an exemption for emergent situations where a police department could go and purchase that equipment and then come back to council at a later date. But there was no language regarding how we would come to council if we identify some equipment that we may need mid-year, but it's not emergency equipment. So I believe that this request will help us solve the issue that we may, that we foresee we may have, and still allow us to be transparent in front of the council when we make these, these purchases. So with that, that concludes my public presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions from council?
No.
Councilor Stern?
Yeah, I just have a quick question. Thank you for all of that. I appreciate the transparency. You had mentioned that the Lenko Bearcat rescue vehicle is shared with other South Bay organizations, or other South Bay agencies. Is the cost also shared?
Yes, it is. So the cost is shared maintenance specifically among all of the agencies that use that piece of equipment.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Other questions? All right. Thank you. We'll open up to public comment, then. Anyone who wants to come down and speak to this item? Come on down. Okay. Zoom? Okay. Really nailed it. Nobody has any questions or has anything to say. Counsel, counsel. Mayor Pro Tim Montgomery?
I'll start, Your Honor. I can tell you, from my prior days to what I saw as mayor in 2020 here with COVID, this is something that we have the right, or should have had the right to do a long time ago. But the Assembly, in its brilliant off time, decided something to make cities do is to have this annual checklist to show what the military surplus, we're going to call it that, is used for. I know problems justifying the use when needed, as Lieutenant Benjamin said. But it doesn't, I don't, I would not use the word because it wasn't used, it wasn't needed. We want that option that staff, our people, give the best equipment that we have in case we need it. We found out in COVID, we were shorthanded. We want to make sure it doesn't happen to us, our pants down again, we get embarrassed by not having things that we should have had here. So obviously, I'm in support of it. And I want to make sure that Lieutenant Benjamin and the chief have the right to, if needed, come to council with a letter, go to city manager, and if things pop up they need, go right to it and go from there. Not make this whole 41, you know, knee-jerk, reaction, and Sacramento have to do this again. Whatever they need to have it happen, make it happen. I'll stop there.
Okay. Anybody else?
I just...
Councilmember Franklin?
Yes, thank you. So I just want to express my support for giving the police department any equipment that they really deem necessary. We, they've proven in the past, they haven't been frivolous with it, that it hasn't been outrageous, and it's been put to good use. And hopefully, we don't need a lot of these items, but it's good to know that it's there. It's good for the people that who would do us harm to know that it's there. So prevention is very important as well. So I fully support.
I do as well. Neither this council nor any council I've, I've been a part of has ever denied the police any equipment that they need. And this is part of that. So we have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Montgomery, seconded by Councilmember Hadley. Is there any other discussion? Can we have a voting screen, please? Thank you. Please vote.
Motion passes five zero.
All right. That takes us to item 13, public hearing to consider extending interim ordinance number 210009, you implementing objective development standards for Senate Bill, everyone's favorite SB9 development. Community Development Director Ty.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council, Carrie Ty, Community Development Director. Presenting tonight's report will be Planning Manager Talia Marsakanyan. Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. Thank you for having me this evening. Tonight, I am here requesting your consideration of the extension of an urgency ordinance that is currently in place and regulating SB9 development projects. I'll briefly walk through the timeline of how we got to where we are today. In September of 2021, the governor signed Senate Bill 9 into law, and that was set to go into effect on January 1 of 2022. Prior to that, on December 7, the council did ask for a presentation regarding SB9 and how that would affect us here at Manhattan Beach. Subsequently, on December 21, the city council adopted an urgency ordinance and a fee resolution, so that the city did have an ability to partially regulate any potential SB9 projects. SB 9 projects. On February 1st of 2022, the city council then extended the urgency ordinance to December 19, 2022, which brings us here today. State law does allow for the urgency ordinance to be extended one additional year, and given that a permanent SB 9 ordinance has not yet been developed and adopted, we are requesting your consideration of an additional year extension, which would take us to December 19, 2023. In the event that the council opts not to extend the ordinance, that would just mean that state law would govern unless and until a local ordinance is adopted. So to remind the council of what our current urgency ordinance does, I'll briefly walk you through these four bullets per se on the screen. It includes an application process, submittal requirements, a fee verification process assuring that the applicant is in fact eligible per the specifications in state law. Also requires a covenant to be put in place and recorded on the property specifying limitations, and it developed some applicable objective development standards that foster projects consistent with the city character while still allowing up to four residences at 800 square feet each pursuant to state law. So some of the objective development standards that we came up with last year and have been incorporated include requiring a parking space per each of these units, concealing electrical equipment, providing a refuse storage area, requiring a maximum of 10-foot-wide driveways for narrow lots, and also our covenant requirements include things such as no non-residential uses in any of these units, no short-term rentals, no subsequent lot split created by SB 9. We require owner occupancy for three years and perpetual access to public right-of-way. I think it's important to report that, to date, we have not received any SB 9 applications. However, we have fielded a number of inquiries at the counter. In terms of SEQA, during the initial adoption of the urgency ordinance, the council did find that the urgency ordinance was exempt from SEQA pursuant to Government Code Section 65852, 15378, 15308, and 15061B3. These exemptions continue to apply to our request this evening. And with that, staff does recommend that council adopt Urgency Ordinance Number 220012-U, extending interim ordinance number 21-0009-U to maintain interim objective development standards for SB 9 projects that may potentially face us in the future.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from council? All right, seeing none, we'll open up to public comment. Anyone from the public want to come down and speak to this item? Come on down.
This is the first time I'm hearing about this. Char Harding, 20-year resident. From what I understand, listening to this, it sounds like any property that can fit a fourplex on their lot and get approved, it, this could happen around our town. This is really scary. I mean, you could have a block of homes, and then in the middle of that block, a fourplex, and I don't, this, I think there's got to be a lot of thought into this, and to hear that already, there are folks that have put in requests for this, I hope there's, there's, I hope people understand what the town could look like if this really goes through. I can't imagine, I mean, even, even, I live over in East Manhattan Beach where the lots are relatively a little bigger, and I could not imagine a fourplex on some of these lots and adding that extra four people's cars. I mean, most families have a couple of cars, so I don't even know how this is going to work with even the noise. So I hope, you know, they gave a really good briefing, but I hope it's, people can picture what this, how our town could really change, and I know that the council obviously understands all this, but I'm kind of speaking to anyone that's out there in the audience, that can you imagine a fourplex going up right next door to your lot? I could picture folks that say, wow, I own a piece of property in Manhattan Beach, and you know, any property here in Manhattan Beach is pretty pricey, but if you're ready to move out of town, out of state, and says, wow, I just hit the jackpot, I could sell my property for probably double than what it is currently priced at, just because a developer will want to knock, knock my house down and put a fourplex on and sell so many more, that's going to be, that's going to, that's going to sound good to a lot of people that were already planning to move. So most people might look at this and go, well, who would, who would do that to their own home? But hey, if you're already looking at moving, you could, you could really do well, but I, I think this is a really terrible idea, and I don't know how, how much the state is forcing this upon us. Almost sounds like it's down the high rose path, but I wanted to just highlight that a little bit to the audience. Thank you.
Thank you. Other speakers? Okay, seeing none in the audience, do we have anyone from Zoom? We do? I don't see. Where should I be looking for that?
Hello, council?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, mayor. Thank you, council, for giving me an opportunity to speak on this, this issue. So first off, first off, I just want to say that I actually live in a triplex condo, and there's really nothing about the building I live in or the people who ship or my building that are a threat to anyone's neighborhood at all in any way. Like, this kind of, the building that I'm in could coexist in any neighborhood in Manhattan Beach alongside single-family homes, and it would not be a threat to anyone's quality of life or anyone's neighborhood at all. We're, we're good people, and we would be, we could, you know, contribute positively to any neighborhood, and so it's not, not a threat. In fact, if you were just driving by, you might not even be able to tell that it was a triplex rather than a single-family home because the, the design. So I'm not sure what exactly this threat is of a triplex or a fourplex in anyone's neighborhood. So the next thing I'd like to say is, I would like to actually read from, this is a comment I left the city, this, I left this comment three years ago, and I just want to read, this is kind of relevant to this issue, so I just want to kind of repeat an excerpt from this comment, so this is from three years ago. So I said, "Based on permitting data from HCD, the Department of Housing and Community Development, recent years were a disaster for home building in Manhattan Beach. In the midst of a statewide housing crisis, not a single net new unit of housing was produced in Manhattan Beach all year. The only type of housing production that occurred was demolishing a very expensive single-family home and replacing it with an even more expensive single-family home. For those that believe in local control of housing policy, now is the time to reflect on how our local policy might have contributed to these awful results and how we can reform to create a better future. We can't keep repeating these zero-housing results. Manhattan Beach must build more housing, and to do that, the city should do a serious top-to-bottom audit of our landings and zoning policies. Number one, stop the cancellations of the planning commission meetings until we can figure out what's going wrong. The commission should generate a new list of ideas and recommendations for the city on every meeting. Number two, introduce a motion to the city council immediately to vote on allowing the construction of duplexes on corner lots in R1 zones. This is a modest proposal, but has been shown to be impactful in cities that have adopted it. Please begin taking these steps now. Don't wait for the state government to force you. You have the power to show that local control can be a solution to the housing crisis rather than a cause of it." So I left that, that comment three years ago, that was before SB 9, so I would just encourage the city council, if you're serious about, you know, addressing housing issues, to do it before another layer of government does it for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Other speakers? Do we have anyone else on Zoom? Okay, all right, to council then. We have a motion by myself to adopt the urgency ordinance, extend the interim zoning ordinances for one year, and second by Mayor Pro Tim Montgomery, and Mayor Pro Tim Montgomery has pushed the button to speak.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would rather remind everyone, before we get revisionist history here, we've been talking about this for almost three years. As the caller said, it's not new, it didn't pop up on our screen all of a sudden. It's been talked about since we were distracted with COVID, but we've been talking about this, and the state's overreach in SB 9 is one of it. This is one part of it, it's coming home. So it's not that we're not aware of it, and councils discussed it many a time. That's something we don't want. We never wanted this. It didn't come from us, it came from Sacramento. I don't want them telling us how to do our zoning when it comes to single-family homes or forced to do anything. The city doesn't build residential projects unlike that caller thought. We don't build residential. That's not the city's job. But the one thing I don't like here is the fact that we're being tied to the program that the city is somehow complicit that we go along with this. If we could wipe anything out of last year or '21, this is one thing I'd wipe out completely. So the interim ordinance allows us to keep some vestige of control in-house and not completely acquiesced to Sacramento, but it's nowhere near what people are talking about. And no, I think as Talia said, no one has applied. So if that drama's supposed to happen, we have not had that drama happen here. So either we're lucky, or the fact the interim ordinance is working, your choice. Either way, I support this and moving forward. Thank you, Your Honor.
Other speakers? All right, a voting screen, please.
Mayor, I'll read the title. Urgency Ordinance Number 220012-U, An Interim Ordinance of the City of Manhattan Beach, Extending Urgency Ordinance Number 210009-U, Adopting Emergency Regulations Related to Urban Lot Splits and Housing Units Built in accordance with Senate Bill 9 and Declaring the Urgency Thereof.
Okay. Voting screen, please. Please vote.
Motion passes 5-0.
Next up is General Business, Item 14, Consideration of a Resolution Awarding a Construction Agreement to Applied Restoration Incorporated for the Pier railing replacement project, including contingency and approving and appropriation the amount of $350,000 from the pier fund to the pier railing replacement project. Public Works Director Lee.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. Eric Lee, Public Works. Senior Civil Engineer Gil Gamboa is going to be providing our presentation tonight.
Good evening, mayor and members of the city council. Thank you, Eric. My name is Gilbert Gamboa. I'm Principal Civil Engineer for the Department of Public Works, and I'm here tonight to present the construction contract award for the delivery of the pier railings replacement So starting off with the city council actions tonight and for consideration, the award of a construction contract, the authorization of a project contingency, and the approval of the project plans and specs, the approval of an additional appropriation to complete the project funding, and then the waiver of any irregularity in the low bidder's bid. So summing up the construction bids, the city conducted a bid opening on October 31st of 2022 for the Manhattan Beach Pier railing replacement project. Seven bids were received via the Planet Bids Online City Bid Portal, inclusive of the base bid and two additive bid items. The bids ranged from a low bid of approximately $2.34 million to the highest bid of $3.4 million. The engineer's estimate was approximately $2 million. The engineer's estimate is an opinion of probable cost taken from the pricing in the fourth quarter of 2021 with a range of plus or minus 20%. And all bids rose above the engineer's estimate due to the current market inflation seen in the custom size and aluminum material itself, along with the specialized coating and color scheme specified in the basis of design. The bids for the two apparent low bidders were evaluated in further detail and included verification of the contractor's license status, checking compliance with the submittal requirements specified in the bid documents, and contract, and contacting multiple references. So moving on to the recommended, recommended contract award, just a bit of a breakdown of the recommended low bid. It included a base bid, which consists of the pier itself, including the round end, the pier runway, and the base area of the pier, including areas immediately adjacent to the bike path, all of which are seafoam green in color. The base bid also included the entrance gates and both staircases on the north and south side of the pier. And then lastly, the base bid also included the railing on the west side of both the lower pier parking lots. And just to explain a little bit about the additive B and C, we included those as a proactive value engineering strategy in the bidding process. The overall bid included the two additive bids in order to obtain the associated cost for the remaining railing on the extended bike path and the perimeter railing around the comfort station and restroom facility. So staff is recommending the award of contract for the base bid, only addressing the areas most in need of replacement and under direct maintenance responsibility of the city. The bike path is LA County Department of Works jurisdiction, and the comfort station was included, if we were able to fit it in the budget, to, to provide consistency with the seafoam green color. But it's, it's been put in about the mid to late 90s, so it's in, it's in good shape right now, so it doesn't need to be replaced right now. The next steps in construction schedule, so in the near term, we're going to finish the contract execution, and then, and then at the beginning of next year, we'll do the pre-construction requirements, host a pre-construction meeting, review submittals, and prepare notices to proceed with the ordering of material procurement, which the ordering and the delivery and procurement of the material procurement is going to be, play a part in, a big part in the construction schedule in terms of when we actually get the railing and when we can start the installation process. So that could be as early as the summer timeframe. It could also be as late as the fall timeframe, it just depends on the market conditions out there and the availability of the material and to get our seafoam green color coated on it. So with that, staff's recommendation, I'll go over the list of items, is to adopt Resolution Number 220158, which includes the award of a construction contract to applied restoration for $1,783,870, authorization of extra work contingency in an amount of $178,387, or 10%, approve plans and specifications for the project, and approve an additional appropriation of $350,000 from the pier fund to the pier project, and approve an additional temporary loan of $200,000 from the parking fund, and also to waive any irregularity in applied restorations bid. So that concludes the report, and staff will be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of staff? Member Pro Tim Montgomery?
Hey, Gil, just want to make sure I get this right, I've been watching at home too. So council approved this design, the seafoam green, we saw the examples in the office you put up there, in February 21. Eight months later, coastal commission, LA County, Army Corps of Engineers, they all approved it. And then what took the gap between October 21 to now?
So I believe that's a, that's a, there must be a typo in the staff report because it was February 2022.
There you go. There's a big difference.
Correct.
And second part of that, the on-page, well, the last page talks about four to six months, waiting for the contractor begins procuring. Is he waiting for something? Once awarded a bid to him, you know, ABC Construction, why four to six months later?
So the way it works with this type of project is, we'll do all the review of submittals, and the contractor will have to make up a mock-up to show that he can actually, you know, procure the, the color and the, and the design of the railing, and then we'll give them notice to proceed with ordering materials. So the ordering materials is something we don't, really can't control in a construction schedule, so that, you know, can take four months, it could take six months, so that, those days don't really count in the day, in the, in the construction schedule, working days. So then, once we get a schedule for the procurement, so they'll give us a schedule for that when we're going to get it delivered, then we'll be able to start...
for that when we're going to get it delivered, then we'll be able to start the actual construction installation. So right now, with the way the market is and what I've seen on other CIP projects that we're conducting, it's really kind of a toss-up of how fast and when contractors can get material in and coded. So.
So that piece of green pipe in your hand.
This is a sample that was approved by council as part of the design basis. So this is the low bidder is this is from the subcontract that the low bidder is going to use. So council pre-approved this. It matches the color seafoam green that's out there that keeps the aesthetics the same on that end of it. And it's from a company called Crane Veer. So this is what our expectations are from the low bidder.
One more, Your Honor, just to make sure. And anything that happens with the railing that rusts out or jagged pieces between now and whenever this guy can procure this, what's your plan in between then?
On the existing railing?
Seafoam duct tape?
Yeah. So right now, we've been using a lot of so quote unquote Band-Aid fixes, but our maintenance staff has either welded new pieces in and repainted them right now. The existing railing is metal, so it's able to be painted on that. The new railing will be aluminum, so it's going to have a little bit more longevity. And then the color will be the seafoam green was able to match on that end of it.
Thank you, Your Honor. No further questions.
Congressman Franklin?
Yes, I, thank you. So when you say that the total bid includes the base bid A, you say pier stairs and parking lots.
So on our lower, you're right, correct. So on the lower pier parking lots, on the west side of them, adjacent to the bike path, there are a short length of railing that's in front of those that's kind of dinged up and needs to be replaced. Since we are the character of those parking lots, you know, we were able to keep that in the scope of work.
So on the north end, is that the railing that goes like to the restroom area?
Yes. Yes, you were talking about two different things there. So on the railing on the pier, the round end, the runway, and then at the base of the pier comes in, and then it does extend along the bike path that's in need of replacement. That's included in the base bid as well.
Okay.
So basically, everything that we see seafoam green color out there will get replaced with new railing.
Okay, gotcha. And you said something, I didn't write it down in time, but because of the additive, you know, the additive bid B, you said it was installed in the 1990s?
That would be the comfort station, the railing all around the restroom facility down there.
Right, okay. So that's already sort of a bronze, the same technology as far as the aluminum?
Right. It's not the same technology. That's anodized. So anodized aluminum only comes in those bronze, I believe bronze, kind of a gold color and maybe black. But you can't, we can't get, we can't use the process of anodizing to obtain the seafoam green. So therefore, we're using something between a powder coating and anodization called a PVDF.
Okay. So what do you think the useful life is of the bronze?
Of the bronze that's out at the, right now, since it's at the 90s, it's already 25-plus years there, and it's in decent structural shape, number one, and coating it is. However, we're trying to keep the aesthetic, kind of historic, quote unquote, you know, aspect of the pier. So that's the character defining feature. So we're trying to balance both longevity with the aluminum material and also, you know, keeping the historic nature of it in terms of seafoam green.
Okay, so.
But I would anticipate the bronze could last another 20 years or so, depending on how.
Is that a good indicator of how long this might last?
Yes, I think so. Absolutely. Since it's the same aluminum material and quoted even, you know, just as good, I think it would last that long.
And is there a warranty that comes with this?
There's a one-year warranty from the install, any kind of mechanical defects for installation on that end of it. There is a warranty on the color itself on that end of it, so we can look at, we can definitely follow up on that. We'll receive the warranty once, you know, we get the installation there.
So a one-year warranty, and then?
That's built into our contract specs.
Right, okay. And do they provide you extras? I mean, for future maintenance needs and things like that?
What we did is in terms of strategy for the maintenance, why the design called for removable sections of up to 24 feet. Each of the spacings of the posts right now is six feet to match the scorelines on the pier. That way, we have some symmetry. We maintain the symmetry. So those removable sections, in the bid, we've asked for the contractor to supply a few other sets that we can store at the maintenance yard. So if we need to remove a section, we can remove that section. We can send that to get re-coated, and then we could take one from our spare and put it into place. And then when we get the original one back, that becomes the spare for the next time. It's kind of a strategy on that end of it, so. Obviously, there's only so much room we can store extras, so.
Okay. And I can't remember going through the specs here, but how about the cement portion that provides the foundation? Because that seems to have some cracks and?
Yes, so there's bid line items to replace the spalling on the curbs where it's needed. There's a few areas that were called out there. There's also concrete work for the foundations for the staircases on the north and south sides. And the staircase is, just to be clear, they're all, they're going to be reconstructed in similar fashion to maintain the character defining features of the pier. So it's not just the railing on the stairs, the entire steps and everything.
Oh, okay. So the wood steps will be?
Yeah, the woods deteriorate also, but we're going to get new treated wood and?
They're looking a little worn.
Correct.
There, okay. All right, great. Well, thank you.
Okay. Well, it's not a question. I'll answer it myself. But also to note for folks that there's going to be five railings, right? There's four now just to meet the new updated safety requirements. But it also means it's going to be less to see through. It'll be more solid. It'll be five railings instead of four.
Correct. There's, because of the updated codes these days, there needs to be a four-inch space between railings on that end of it, so.
There's two rails out there. Okay, let's open up to the public. Anybody want to make any comments on this item? Come on down. Pier railings, rusty replacement. Good stuff. All right. Anyone on Zoom? Okay. Counsel, there's a motion. It's by me to adopt Resolution Number 22-0158, items A through E, and also waive any irregularity in the Applied Restoration Incorporated bid. There's a second by Mayor Pro Tim Montgomery. Any other comments? Okay, voting screen, please. Please vote. All right. Thank you. Next up is item number 15, review of the city's procedures related to modification of street configurations. Community Development Director Ty.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Carrie Ty, Community Development Director.
There's a lot of words in here. They don't necessarily address what the issue was, but go ahead.
I will introduce Traffic Engineer Eric Zambli to provide the staff report. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. I'm Eric Zambli, the City Traffic Engineer. I'm here to present a review of the city's procedures related to the modification of street configurations. Big words. On September 6th, the city council asked for a future agenda item asking about any geometric changes to a street and when they would be brought to the city council.
Define geometric. Is that a physical change?
Would be a physical change.
Okay.
So we try to get our heads around street configuration. So there isn't a industry standard for that definition or that word. But generally speaking, it means the physical, operational, or functional use of a street or roadway. And so a change in that street configuration would be something that would change the physical geometry, widths, length, those kinds of things. Any changes to the vehicle capacity of that roadway and potentially restrictions in vehicle movement, such as turn restrictions or something like that. What it might not include is something like minor parking layout changes, changes to or additions of curb ramps, crosswalks, those kinds of things.
What are the procedures for the geometric changes?
So I'll get to that. This one here. Next slide. There it goes. Now we'll go to the next one. So there's a number of policies and procedures that we go through, and we look at when we consider any change to a street. And so that may include, and is primarily based on our city's mobility plan. The city's mobility plan has a number of goals and policies. It's got 48 different policies, as a matter of fact. The main goals are to provide a safe, efficient, multimodal transportation system, to move commuter traffic through the city primarily on the arterials and collectors, and to protect the other streets, the residential streets, from traffic intrusions, to provide for adequate parking, use of all users on those roadways and streets, and to provide well-marked pedestrian and bicycle networks. So that's the overarching goal, what we're looking at for our streets. There's a host of different regulations that we have to follow from a federal, state, and local level. Some of them are built from assembly or senate bills from the state of California. Some of them are federal regulations, such as the Uniform Traffic Control Devices Manual. There are state traffic manuals. There's the American Disabilities Act. There are CEQA requirements and all the rest. It's a lot to go into whenever anything gets changed on a street. We also have our local coastal plan, where sometimes the project is large enough where you have to conduct or have a coastal development permit for it. And we also have our municipal code and our mobility plan, of course. So our own policies would include that mobility plan. It has bicycles and pedestrians and transit and trucks and all the different users of our streets and the goals for those users. We have our living streets policy that was approved many years ago, trying to get a more usable, more friendly roadway system. We have our traffic impact guidelines, analysis guidelines, that's for private developments and when private developments may impact our city streets. We passed a, or we approved a crosswalk enhancement study, which was kind of a comprehensive look at all of our crossings back in 2021. And we have, we had a local road safety plan that was conducted by our engineering division to find out where we can make improvements with regard to traffic safety. So here is the evaluation process that we take when we have a capital project, when we have a major project, when we have maintenance actions that may possibly change the street's configuration. And so engineering will generally look at the goals and policies of our mobility plan and look at any other legislative policies or any other federal policies that have to meet in order to do the street project. And they incorporate them wherever possible, wherever feasible, and whenever it's financially possible. The city engineer and the traffic engineer will review the proposed project, make sure it meets the federal, state, and local requirements, doesn't cause adverse traffic impacts. The planning may get involved when we have to look at CEQA or coastal development act conformance. Oftentimes, there is public outreach in the design phase when there might be potential impacts to adjacent properties or access to those properties. That can be done through the PPIC. It can be done separately as a neighborhood workshop or something like that. We also have our staff's traffic committee, which is comprised of our police and fire and public works and risk management teams on a staff level, and we will take a look at projects as they come up as well to see if there's any safety or operation impacts. There's oftentimes also permits that may be required from Caltrans if we're getting into their right of way, or other county areas or other jurisdictions where it might have a change. And then oftentimes, the city council will be involved in passing a resolution when required to make changes when legislative actions is necessary. Also, when there's other types of projects, minor projects, something that comes up by the citizens, asking for certain changes, or if they've brought up a safety issue or something like that, the traffic engineer will conduct a traffic study. And if there's a street configuration change, it generally is required that it goes to city council for a resolution. And by that, I mean, we have a city's uniform traffic resolution. It's number 2715. It was first enacted in 1968, and it regulates one-way streets, stop signs, truck routes, walk streets, limited access, those kinds of restrictions on our street system. And there are resolutions or amended resolutions to that uniform traffic resolution for all of those changes. And so whenever there's a stop sign that comes to us, it goes to the PPIC for a recommendation, and then it comes to the city council for a resolution, and that's the amendment to that uniform traffic resolution. Our California Vehicle Code also requires resolutions of the city council or an ordinance for changing any speed limits or for preferential parking, and oftentimes for certain types of removals of crosswalks or changes to an intersection. The private development, when a private development comes in, there's often traffic impacts, and it's always a big issue. And so sometimes there's conditions of approval that are written into the entitlement documents that approve the project restricting turns or limiting access to prevent traffic intrusion into neighborhoods and such. And then there's also our Neighborhood Traffic Management Program, our NTMP program, where we look at neighborhoods as they come up and are requesting to have traffic calming in their streets, whether it's too much traffic volume, traffic intrusion, traffic speeds or something like that. We look at the neighborhoods on a comprehensive basis, bring those through a whole set of steps to make sure that the public is involved, that the neighborhoods are supportive of what they want to do, and that the changes are reviewed to make sure that there's no adverse impacts by putting, say, for instance, a speed hump here and the traffic goes somewhere else. So those are some of the other procedures that we go through when we're looking at any kind of street configuration change. I'd be happy to answer questions that you might have regarding this topic.
Okay. So I feel like you're trying to kill my record of shortest meeting ever, but I'm going. Great info. Now let's set that all aside and get to the gist of why. Because I'm the one who asked for this to come back to council for basically two reasons. And I want to, and there's a question in here somewhere, but it's why weren't certain changes brought to council first? And one of those is Morningside, where we took, putting up bike lane, great. The street was repaved as part of the slurry seal, but it took out the right turn lane as you approach 13th Street going north, because it's one way anyway, right there, going north. And it is striped, right? And I understand the reasoning behind it is to allow for loading and unloading during the farmer's market. The farmer's market, which is Tuesdays, used to be 12 to 4, it's now 12 to 3. So for three hours, we took out a right-hand turn pocket, three hours on a Tuesday, one day a week, we took out a right-hand turn pocket, which people I see constantly confused. Should they go in that and use it as a right-hand turn lane? Should they stay and back up the others who want to turn left or go elsewhere? And so why did we change that? And why didn't that come to council first as part of that change? And the other was the slurry seal of 15th Street in front of City Hall over here, where we actually, and this council abhors the idea of road diets. I think we proved that on Vist Del Mar. And yet, we took out a lane of traffic for a good two-thirds of the street, threw in a bike lane, but then it's after going east. It's only after the City Hall parking lot and the gap that is for the fire department to come ingress and egress that it then goes to two lanes. Neither of those two projects, those changes, which I would consider rise to the point that council should be at least aware of. And I know it says in here in the procedures that, you know, we review, they come to council's that, you know, we review the, they come to councils part of the capital improvement plan. I remember the capital improvement plan for those things, and it's usually a paragraph with a graphic that's so small you can't see anything in six-point type. So why do those two things didn't come to council? And will any future changes like that come to council? Because if they're not going to, I'm going to make a motion that they do, just so that we, because, you know, we've got to answer the complaints and the concerns of everyone who says, why'd you take away a lane of traffic? Why am I backed up now?
Okay, well, maybe I'll take the answer in reverse. And to answer your last question first is that for slurry seal projects, generally it's assumed that the striping will go back the way it was before and, and all things are good. Doesn't mean that it has to, but sometimes the plans are not drawn with striping plans because they're just doing the slurry part and then replacing the, the striping. In this case, the striping came in late in the process, and so it wasn't part of the initial contractor package that went to city council. So you would have seen it otherwise. So that's, that's where you would have seen it, and it, it should have been there. Having...
But it wasn't. So?
It wasn't, so.
Failure of process, or?
Corrective measures. We can make sure that the striping and those kinds of things are built into the bid package that, that the city council has a look at it in the future. So that's the solution to that. Backing up to Morningside and explaining those striping changes, it was a slurry seal project. It's basically the time where you can make striping changes. There were several activities and things that were going on, on Morningside that didn't necessarily rise to the level of necessarily make, requiring a city council action, such as the loading zone. The loading zone was there, it was actually a taxi cab zone before. And so we repurposed it and made it a loading zone. The loading zone is not just for the...
In the right-hand turn lane?
Right. And it's not just for, it's not just for loading or for the farmer's market. It is used every single day. It's for the, the businesses that are along Morningside Drive, and it's very necessary. The police department's had a, a very hard problem with loading going on in the red zones along Morningside Drive.
They still park farther down closer to Manhattan Beach.
They still do that, too, and we're, we're all over it. There's also a chance to add in a bike lane without removing any, without removing any access or, or turn restrictions. And so that was another ability to help get alternate transportation close to City Hall. And so that's another way for, for bicyclists to have access to our civic center. It does not restrict the lefts and the right turns.
Council needs to be notified of these things.
Understand. Any other questions?
I do, Your Honor. Hey Eric, the mayor brought it up, the corner, northeast corner, MBB, Morningside. He's talking about the cars that park on the very edge there. Now talk about the Amazon trucks, I, I get that. But I know what this corner, have you thought about putting those plastic bollards on that corner so that they won't park right at the very edge carrier, right where they, at MBB at Morningside? Try to hang it right. You're stopping for the flashing light, right? You're waiting, you're waiting. You look and there's a car parked right on that corner.
Where the flare is.
Yeah, it's like, really? It's like, seriously? You can't go 10 feet, park at a parking space?
I know.
Or go in the garage?
I know.
So I'm thinking that little edge there, you put a plastic bollard and block it, or a big, heavy concrete pot like you did on 13th for the, for to protect the, the market. Something needs to be in that quarter stopped.
Yeah, a, a more permanent type of solution would be great. If we put bollards or posts in there, it would block the street sweeper, and so you'd, you'd have to hand-clean that every day or every time the sweeper goes by. That's a possibility. I don't like them parking there any more than you do.
Probably less.
A bike around, put a bike around.
It's an irritant.
Other questions? All right, we'll open up to the public then. Anyone from the public want to come down and speak to this item? Okay. You want on Zoom, dying to speak to this item? All right, I'm just going to assume from the responses received that staff got the message, and we'll just, what, receive and file? I don't think we need to provide any more direction, do we? Got it, okay. All right, so we'll move on from that then. Item number 16, consideration of reimbursement for city fees paid for American Martyrs Mustang Main Event. Community Director Ty.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council again. This is in response to a city council request. It came about in a sort of roundabout way. The initial request was actually for a fee waiver. Can you hear me okay? I can take.
Yes.
Okay, you're fine, okay. And the initial request was on August 16th, and it was for a fee waiver for an alcohol permit, but it turned out to be not related to alcohol, but rather permitting fees that were related to the Mustang Main Event at American Martyrs property. So this was a private fundraiser event that included live entertainment and auction dinner and security. And the configuration was that they wanted to, it was an outdoor event, they wanted to have tents, there were two tents, and then entertainment sound permit. And then the, the total permit fees in your report are $4,934.31, and that was for an entertainment permit, an amplified sound permit, an electrical permit for temporary power, and then a tent permit, which is a building permit, including a review of structural calculations for tents, because there are people under these tents. And then also a fire permit for tents. Tents have to go through a fire permit because they are, they can be flammable if not, if not proper, properly reviewed or, you know, the right material. These fees, because they are for a private event, they are adopted from the city's fee schedule. So they're charged in accordance with fee schedule that was adopted by the city council. And they're considered a, what's called a private benefit fee, so it's not something like a police service, it's something more akin to development. And the city's financial policy is that any reimbursement or waiver of this kind of fee comes before the city council, and so that's why this is before you tonight. I will say, in terms of fee waivers for other kinds of events, a couple of years ago, the city council did approve a series of partial fee waivers for what was called legacy events. And there were 10 of those events, and those include the fireworks, the American Martyrs 5K and Parish Fair and a few other things, wine auctions on there as well. But this, one particular item was not on the legacy event. Again, so it's a, it's a one-off and it's coming before council. So basically, the request is to reimburse American Martyrs for the cost of those five permits that I detailed and the amount of $4,934.31. And that concludes my presentation. I'm able to, or happy to answer any questions.
Question, Mayor for Tim Montgomery.
Thank you, sir. Director Ty, Carrie, what was the, was there an alcohol permit given? And so what was the cost for such permit?
So according, associated with this event, our department did not charge an alcohol permit, and so if there was one, it was paid to somewhere else, and I'm not aware of the amount.
Got it, thank you.
Sorry, yeah.
Counselor Stern.
Yeah, I, I just want to understand, I think maybe just this event a little bit more. How many years have they been requesting permits for this type of event, for this event, actually?
You know, unfortunately, I don't know the length of the recurrence of this event, whether this was a new event or whether it's, it's, it was legacy. I did look back at past events, and it was not mentioned in the, in sort of the past events dealing with legacy events. And so it may be a newly created event, but unfortunately, I don't know whether this is a first time or, or how long it's been recurring.
And on our legacy list, though, there aren't private events on the legacy list.
Correct, yes. The legacy list were events deemed to have general public benefit in some, in some way.
Well, some are ticketed or have fees, runs have, you have to sign up and pay a fee to be a part of the run.
Right, right.
And you have to obviously buy a ticket to the wine auction, things like that.
Right, and, and you know, that may have to do with the, ultimately, where the benefits go. Some of the legacy events, whether they go to the school or whether they go to some other kind of charity, but those were the ones that were reviewed under the, the legacy event from about five years ago.
Have you had other fee requests for private events? Do you know of any?
Uh, no, this has been the first one, at least in, in my knowledge.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Counselor Franklin?
Yeah, did American Martyrs specify what the money was being raised for specifically, or is it?
I was not provided that information. I, I, I know it was, it said it was a private fundraiser. I believe it was for their school, I believe that, but I don't have the documentation about specifically what their Mustang Main Event benefits.
There's a comment in our packet from a Mike Kersey. As President of the American Martyrs Parent Association, I want to thank the city council for considering a request for permit fee waiver relief for the fundraising efforts of our nonprofit school. We're very grateful that the city has recognized nonprofit education missions with fee relief for events like the wine auction, Sophisticated Snoop's Tour as a result of COVID and the passing of our presner Debbie Walmer, who managed the Snoop's Tour for American Martyrs School, replaced the Snoop's Tour in 2022 with the Mustang Main Event. Our school mascot, mascot is the Mustang. Requesting that council would apply the fee waivers and discounts to the UME as a legacy special event to replace the Snoop's Tour. So there's some background there. If that is not possible, we humbly request that the council waive or reduce the fees charged, consistent with other fee waivers or discounts which may apply to other nonprofit school and education fundraising events.
I believe Mike is here also, if you have questions for him.
Okay, we'll open it up for a public comment in a second.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, we'll open up a public comment then. You might want to come down.
Thank you, I'm Mike Kersey. I'm the current president of the American Martyrs Parent Association. I have two children at the school. And with me also is Bob Hodges, who's the business manager for American Martyrs. Basically, the Sophisticated Snoop's Tour used to be one of our legacy fundraising events for the school, and with the changes that we had to make going into 2022, and as I, as I mentioned in the comment that I typed in, we replaced it with the Mustang Main Event, and we're hoping that that Mustang Main Event would enjoy the same consideration for a nonprofit fundraising for a school here in Manhattan Beach. So if there's other questions about what, what, what the event is like, or what we do, or anything else that you would need to know.
Any questions from council?
But it would be an ongoing, every year we expect to have the Mustang Main Event again, where we'd, we'd hope to.
My other question for Bob, but I'll wait for Mike's done, then I'll ask Mike, uh, Bob to come up.
I guess I, I do have a question, though, for staff, because Sophisticated Snoop's, though, that is back, right?
No.
Not. What just took place? Something just happened where people were touring homes. I read in the MB News.
That's Sandpipers, holiday homes.
The Sandpipers have a similar event, I believe.
So you're looking for this to replace as a legacy event?
That would be our, that would be our hope, to have the same type of permit relief that we would get.
Because otherwise, it takes 10 years to be a legacy event.
Correct.
Was Sophisticated Snoop's a legacy event?
I believe it was.
Over 10 years.
Was there fees?
I don't know.
Yeah, I'm, I'm researching that right now.
Okay.
Hopefully I'll get an answer.
Okay. Any other questions?
A question for Bob.
Okay, go ahead.
Hey Bob, could you step up for a second? Thank you for being here, Bobby Bob Hodges, he's a longtime manager there at Martyrs, I've known him for years. So I ask you, Bob, so when this first came up, we, I thought that it was an alcohol permit reimbursement. Can you explain that to the rest of you that don't know the history?
Yeah, there was some confusion, not sure how it started. Senior Barry initiated the request by sending a letter to Councilman Montgomery, pointing out that we were being charged permit fees that we weren't used to being charged for the, for the events we have at our school. We have three really main fundraising events, the parish and school, the parish fair, 5K Run, Sophisticated Snoop's Tour. Those have all enjoyed for as long as he can remember. They've been afforded a reduction of, of fees. So he was surprised that we were being charged full fees for the permits for the main event. So we asked that, that you consider a reduction of the fees or waiver of the fees. We weren't quite sure how to apply, we weren't quite sure the procedures for doing this, the legacy event process. I mean, I don't recall being involved in it five years ago, but it's been around for a long time, and we've been part of that for a long time, too. The Snoop's Tour, the Parish Fair, and the 5K Run. So we thought, well, one of the processes we want to follow would be to point out that we're not, we weren't able to do the Snoop's Tour anymore because of COVID at the time, and then also Debbie Walmer passed away, and she had run the Snoop's Tour for 35 years. And you probably know her, and that was a wonderful event, but we, we couldn't do it because of COVID, but also Debbie was really the heart and soul of that event. So we had to come up with a different event to replace that, and that was what we call the main event, which is essentially a fundraiser for American Martyrs School that is more of a dinner event on, on the parking lot of the campus. And so the idea was surprise over the, the fees that, that were involved in the main event permitting process, and just hoping that, given what the, the event is for, which is to benefit our school, and replacing an event that's been longstanding that was such a huge value to the school, we wanted to try to seek some sort of relief, and that's why we're here now. I'm not sure how the alcohol part of it interfered with that process, but I think we sent the letter in April in this, this ongoing process.
Okay, but alcohol's not part of it.
Alcohol's not part of it.
Let's get on to other questions, then.
I, I withdrew it, because I, I found my answer here.
All right.
Nothing further for me, Bob, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So we'll open up to the public then for public comment.
Good evening, Mayor, council. Just, oops, just listening to this, one suggestion. It seems like we're kind of testing ourselves on what we think is right or wrong. I suggest we come up with some guiding principles, so if something like this comes up again, we can refer to it, so that if we get new council members, we've got someone to look back to, it's just a test. And if someone's applying for it, they can kind of look at that and have an idea, can they, or can they not get the waiver? Just a suggestion.
Appreciate that. Other speakers? Anyone by Zoom? So I guess my question is, a legacy event, though, what would they be charged? They're, they're looking for a full reimbursement, but we don't fully waive all fees for legacy events either, do we?
No. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, the city council for legacy events approved, it, it's 75% for some and 100% for like, call them super legacies. So originally, there were a couple that get 100%, but in the June 9th, 2020 action that the city council took, it looks like there's 70, it looks like there's 75% for a lot of the events. And I have, if you need the list, I can probably...
That's okay.
Okay.
No, I, I would just suggest for this one, and I'm willing to listen to everyone else, that we be consistent, though, right? We need to be consistent with the other nonprofits and, and how we treat folks. And, you know, I wouldn't consider this a super legacy event, but I understand you're trying to replace a legacy event. I don't know, it's, it says in the, the, the staff report that the, it's not on the list of legacy events. The Sophisticated Snoop's Tour, I don't know if it was, I don't know what fees we would have charged you for that, because I don't think any city fees would be involved in that.
There was a banner fee that was waived.
A banner fee that was waived. So at this point, you know, I think it's 10 years for a super legacy event is 100%. I would do the 75% as a fairness now to, consistent with other nonprofits and give you that, you know, full, look, look to a full reimbursement as you reach 10 years. But as you're replacing a long-term legacy event, but really didn't require a lot of city permits, but knowing it was a long-term legacy event, and we did provide some benefit there, that we do the 75% now, consistent with others, and as you reach that 10-year mark, as others do, then you can apply for that 100%. That would be my suggestion.
Go ahead, I'll follow.
Counselor Franklin?
Yes, so, so I agree with that. I mean, we, we just even, at the beginning of the city council meeting today, we had representatives from all the schools, from the public schools and from American Martyrs. So, you know, it's a part of our, it's, it's a part of the fabric of our town. and, um, its purpose is, you know, exactly equivalent of the, uh, Manhattan Beach Ed Foundation. And, um, so I would certainly support the 75% fee, work their way up to a super legacy event, and, uh, we'll go from there.
Mayor Lieutenant Montgomery?
Thank you, Your Honor. For those of you not familiar with the Super Snoop's Tour, and I, and I was, and I happen to know Debbie Walmer, I was fortunate enough to meet, to know her, there was a longtime tradition, that Snoop's before Sandpipers, or maybe they're similar, to go to people's homes and take a tour around, homes around Manhattan Beach, and that was Debbie's baby, as you said, Bob. So I think what the confusion was, and I'll probably take the hit myself, during COVID, when this happened and during 2020, somehow the connection between what was happening, Snoop's dropping off, this taking over, we didn't grab the two together. So I think, as the mayor's correct, we should do this as a 75% waiver, and Monsignor Berry would be probably happy with that, and move it forward. If it continues every year and gets to a super legacy status, we'll be at 100% like at Parish Fair and, and, and hometown fair at others, but for now, that's our greatest move, to move it there, it's fairness. And to the figure earlier, we do have a matrix. Parks and Rec has a matrix, talks about all events in the city, certain thresholds. This swap-out of Snoop's to the main event tour would be new and unusual. It would require a council meeting. Everything else fits a matrix when we go from there, so there's a motion, Your Honor.
Thank you, and I've seconded that. If Monsignor Berry isn't happy, I'm sure I'll hear about it at midnight mass on Christmas Eve. Uh, anybody, any else to speak? We have a motion.
You can convert.
By Mayor Lieutenant Montgomery. Thank you. Uh, and seconded by myself. Thanks, thank you.
Motion passes 5-0.
Good to see you, Bob. Mike?
Thank you.
Thanks for watching.
All right. Takes us to item L.
You're on your way to a record, man.
City council requests and reports, including AB 1234 reports. Anyone? Mayor Lieutenant Montgomery?
Yes, Your Honor, I attended the last board meeting for the California, it's called Cal Cities now, it used to be California League of Cities, and I think I'd sent, this city manager, George Gabriel, our, our, the board decision on the four priority items. Now, let's read them, because there's just four, what they are, what we voted on. These are all the cities in California, it's 400, it's 99% of all cities are members of the California State League, and we all vote together. LA gets one vote, Manhattan Beach gets one vote. There's no weighted gorilla in, in the room here. Here's what they are. Protect and expand investments to prevent and reduce homelessness, of course, increase supply and affordability of housing while retaining local control. There you go. And local decision-making. Number three, improve public safety in California communities, uh, not just holiday time or when we're in COVID, and safeguard essential local revenues to support fiscal sustainability. The reason why that number four is important, remember the days when the state was grabbing or attempting to grab, uh, hotel transit tax, TOT tax? Remember that, Bruce? That forced Prop 22 to come out? We're worried that California and the coming recession, uh, will try to grab revenue from the city, so that's why that's there. But there are others that we talked about. Those are the four main things. Any more questions, let me know, and I'll drop off the actual binder to the city clerk. And that state, the state league pays for all the hotel and travel to and from, so there's no, no city expense. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Am I the only one who smells pot in here? All right. Maybe there's a reason. Um, all right. Chief? Anything going on? Um, anybody else? Future agenda items? Councilor Franklin?
Yes, thank you. Um, so there seems to be some confusion, uh, in February of 2022, the council voted to, um, uh, to provide a refund to, there are four restaurants that are paying, or had been paying even before COVID, public right-of-way fees for outdoor dining locations. And, um, they had been paying, where the dining decks had not, uh, we waived the fees for the dining decks, we did not waive the fees for the, for the, or we did not discuss the public right-of-way. So it came back in February 2022, we approved a refund of those fees out of fairness, uh, to those four restaurants, and, um, then we continued, after the refund, we continued to bill those, um, those restaurants, uh, which just seemed to be counter to what we had approved, uh, the refund of the fees that they were paying when they, when they shouldn't have. So, um, I'd like, I, I would like to bring this back and get it clarified and, and, and state that, uh, they should not be paying those, uh, those, uh, fees for their outdoor dining until we start charging for the, well, the outdoor decks or the end of the emergency order.
Clarification?
Just to clarify, it's a clarification.
Maybe we just need a...
Hey, because I remember differently.